Are you good though? You're recording? Bill, you're good? Yeah, okay, thanks, sir. Okay. Good evening, everybody. The time is six forty-three. I am calling to order the October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two Borough Council Work Session Meeting. Thank you, everybody, for your patience. Sorry about that late start. Number two on our item is Pledge of Allegiance led by Ms. Vaccaro. Okay, thank you. Item number three is comment suggestions petitions by residents in attendance regarding items that are not on the agenda. Anybody, please come to the mic, state your name and address for the record.
Michael Gailey, four twelve West Union Street. Very briefly, sorry to bother you. I know you met with Jennifer Snyder tonight to consider their application for the solicitor position. I just felt compelled, having worked with them previously, to note my support for them. Jennifer and I actually practice the same type of law, so theoretically she's a competitor. So I'll deny ever saying this if anyone asks, but she's a phenomenal attorney. She was tremendous helping us throughout the pandemic and throughout some other difficult issues we dealt with. I can't speak highly enough of her abilities in the realm of labor employment law. And obviously Jerry is a phenomenal attorney as well and has done some great things for us in the past. So I just wanted to throw my hat in the ring for the Dilworth Paxton folks, given my background. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gailey. Any other comments? Okay, moving on. Item number four is a discussion item about the Gay Street closure and our timeframe for twenty twenty-three.
I brought this up. I brought this up. I have been working with the bid and with traffic planning and design and talking to some of the business owners, definitely not all of them. But out of respect for our downtown community, I think it is of extreme importance that we agree on whatever we're going to agree on sooner rather than later. So that communications can be sent out, so that people can be preparing, hiring. If we're asking them to do more than they're comfortable with, that we can be explaining how it's going to be okay. If we're not going to be doing what most of the community seems to want, we need to be explaining to them why this is being done. That's why I brought this up. I would like to know where the rest of council stands on what their expectations are for at least next summer. Not as far as the gates or however mechanically we're shutting things down, but what our plan is for the timing of this.
Yeah, so I think knowing now that we have regained control of Gay Street changes things and I think actually speeds things up, which is great. I know that we have a plan coming soon, but that looks like more like a long-term plan, like you said, but I think you're right. I think council needs to decide soon. What do we want to do? And I think it's more around timing. We're going to do weekends full-time, what dates and this and that. I think we have some flexibility there, so. Um, yeah, I think we do need to decide that. I would, you know, entertain any other comments. Um, I guess the concerns I have are, well, the questions I have, I guess, are about the concerns from some of the business members. Because I feel like, you know, I know that you want to plan and I knew that they need that time, but we have done this for several years, so I feel like they should have some idea and some preparedness. I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to like push them, say, no, it's not a big deal. Like, I don't want to.
Yeah, it's not, they definitely do, but one of the things that I heard was, you know, I didn't know it was only on the weekends. I didn't know that was coming, so then my plan was this and then the reality was that. Like, that's all, I want to avoid that. I want people to be, have as much time as possible. If it's retail, buying for the right season. If it's, if it's restaurants, getting the right tables, getting the right staff, getting people. If we're encouraging retail to have more outdoor stuff, they need additional staff for that, a lot. It's, it's a heavy ask. And it's a big opportunity if we do it well, but we have to do it well and we have to prove to them that we're going to be able to, so.
Understood. Thanks. Comments up here? Any thoughts?
To shield it, to Ms. Vaccaro's point, do we want to take a poll or make a recommendation, whether it's just weekends? If it's, you know, Labor Day, Memorial Day through Labor Day, or, you know, whatever that is, do we, to your point, do we start planning that now, right? So that we are communicating clearly to the folks that it impacts the most so that they can plan. I think we need a consensus of what that's going to be.
When, when would be the latest they would need to know by? I hate, that's gonna be a bad question, but sorry, I'm sorry. So if, if we knew by, if we could decide this next month, at this meeting next month, would that be the acceptable time, timeframe? Okay. Is there anybody here who wants to speak to this? Maybe give their two cents. Yeah, Ms. Brown, come on.
Excuse me, I just had a couple of discs removed from my back, so I'm a little slow right now. Holly Brown, thirty-seven West Gay Street, Westchester, PA. I'm here in behalf of talking about a hundred other people I know who never show up at meetings and refuse to come, and I know you're tired of hearing from me. But I've just talked to so many people who love having the street closed. They'd love to see it closed all year long. But even if you can't do that right now, because I understand there is some complication possibly with your deal with the state, that they may not want you to close it permanently. That's something you could deal with later. People change at the state, so all those things could be talked about. But they'd love to have it. I think most people would like it closed twenty-four seven. I've also heard a lot of people say, geez, they're sorry it wasn't open through October because we had such beautiful weather and could be out during that time period. But I remember two of the words that were up on that screen were ambiance and permanent, were the two things at the survey. And although the survey was incomplete, it only asked if people liked it for the weekend. It didn't really do a complete survey. So yes, they may have liked it, but it doesn't say they wouldn't have liked something more. You can't get that ambiance when you close it for three days a week. The stores and restaurants just can't do it. And if you noticed, OPA, they've got the corner beautifully decorated, because that's the only place they can put it. But if you had it closed twenty-four seven, they'd have everything out on the street. It would be really pretty. So I can get you a thousand signatures if you want. I would be happy to do it, that would say they'd like to see it closed twenty-four seven. At least the first year or two, deal with it, do a deal with it down the road maybe, permanently and see how it works, see how it works for everybody during that time period. But I'm here to throw in a vote for a lot of people that they would like to see it at least twenty-four seven seasonally. Okay.
Thanks, Ms. Brown. Uh, Mr. Metric, as far as what Ms. Brown was talking about and Pendot not part of the deal was that we can't close that permanently. Did that mean, that didn't mean twenty-four seven, it meant permanently as if, as a vacating the road essentially, making it a, not a road anymore. Is that what that meant or?
The resolution that council passed was that Gay Street could not be permanently closed without running it by Pendot.
And permanently means like, not just.
Means never opened again.
Never open again. Know what permanently means, but. Mr. O'Brien.
John O'Brien, Executive Director, Westchester Business Improvement District. Thank you for having this discussion. The sooner that you can get the information out, the better. The bid's position as of right now, we're simply going to be following the data that has been collected and supporting a more weekend-focused closure. Um, I think the, the best timeframe for that would be sometime in May till early October. Um, so that you're capturing, you know, there's September and that first weekend or so of October of the good weather and sunshine. Depending how far you get into October, once the sun starts to go down earlier and earlier, that's going to kind of handicap it. But as of right now, unless the kind of the data does change, our position right now is supporting a more weekend-style closure, at least for twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the, from what I, what I'm gathering, council wants it closed. We obviously have a plan coming up soon. We just need to decide, is it going to be for the weekends? Is it going to be twenty-four seven? I think the dates were all pretty flexible on and, and I don't think anybody's going to argue with those dates that Mr. O'Brien just suggested around May to early October. Um, so I think we just need to come up and as a consensus with council, what do we want to do? Do we want to close it twenty-four seven? Or do we want to do just weekends or some other plan there? Um, sounds like those are the two. So, um, I think we have a, that's going to task us then to come up with that consensus by next month. Any thoughts, Mr. McQuaid?
I guess to Holly's point, if there are a thousand petitions, signatures for a petition out there that say that that's what they'd like. I'd love to hear from those people or, or see that as opposed to what we've already heard, which is, I guess what I've heard is the majority would prefer the weekends. So I'd like to see that for, for real, one way or the other.
Yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
John, was there a reason why in the survey it was not mentioned for permanent closure? That was not a question.
Um, so the, the survey was designed by the borough's consultants. I did not design that, so. You know, I, I know there was some discrepancies. You know, in, in my mind, I felt that the survey was fair, pretty accurate and did accurately describe the situation to respondents. That's just from my individual perspective on that.
Can you speak to that briefly?
Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
The survey, there, there were two survey presentations, one to just the businesses. And there was clearly confusion in the business meeting about a question in the survey. Asking, is the current closure long enough? And some of the business owners thought by long enough, they meant the months. And some of the business owners thought the days. And the question did not make it clear. I believe that the question was changed by the time most of the general population took the survey. But it still didn't give an option to request for a permanent closure or a Christmas fair or like, you know, it didn't, it wasn't a broad question. It was a very specific question. And the question was, do you like the current closure? And I think people do. And so they all said yes. So I, I think that I'm somebody who works with marketing surveys and I believe one hundred percent that it was not intentional. But I do not think that that question gave an accurate reading.
I understand. Mr. Flynn.
Good evening. The, I, I've always been in favor of closing the, the Gay Street from Thursday to Monday morning. Uh, because during the other days, they, they have to do commerce. We have to be able to clean the streets. We've got to be able to get deliveries in and out. We, we, we need to actually be able to let people traverse the, the Gay Street, you know, for business. Plus, not, not to mention the, the revenue and the parking meters. My other concern is that the vacancy on, on the street. If you go all the way down to Country Bagel and start walking up, there's so many dark spots and so many vacant spots on Gay Street. And this has been two years in a row now. I mean, it's gotten to a point where Mr. O'Brien has people doing yoga in the middle of the street to try to fill the street up. Uh, it does get busy at Avalon Social and OPA and Teka. And then, of course, then it becomes vacant and dark when you get over the other side of the street. So it's important, you know, to, if we're going to do something festive, that we get some buy-in, maybe from some of the businesses that are not on uh, Gay Street, to, to fill the, the dark spots that are in, in the blocks.
Yeah, and I think those, that was addressed in the plan, but that plan, to your point, was geared towards the Friday to Sunday or Friday to Monday closure. So they had, they called them activity zones, right? Is that what was the, they ditched into the terminology? And I think that's a great idea, but would that, would those activity zones be there Monday through Wednesday, you know, and I don't know if they will? Understood. Yeah. Mr. Gailey.
Michael Gailey, four one two West Union Street. The only thing I want to add is that we did for two years, closed the street down, you know, permanently from May through October. And, you know, we were, a bunch of us sat up here and I don't remember throngs of people coming in and complaining about it. In fact, I think it was generally regarded by all of the residents and, and most of the business community as a success. Uh, I don't see any reason why, if we've done it for two years prior to this one, we couldn't continue that plan and have it continue to be successful.
Thank you. Um, sir, let me get this, go ahead.
I, I just have one comment to make. If we do shut it down, we're roughly going to lose thirty thousand dollars a month in parking revenue. In which case, I have yet to see a study if that has transitioned into any of the other garages. So before we make that decision, I think we need to look at that. If we shut it down for those six months from May until October, that's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And so I don't know how we're going to make that up. I understand the original idea was to help restaurants during the pandemic. But I'd like to see that completed before we can make that decision. I mean, that's a lot of money and that means we're going to have to make it up somewhere.
Yeah, good point. Thank you. Um, okay, so we have, you know, some discussions or some thoughts, I guess, on our own for this next month as council. We need to come up with a consensus of what we want to decide on, but that would be the plan. And I would suggest to anybody out there who has, um, who feels strongly one way or the other, to, to, you know, let us know. Some of you said you would, so appreciate that. Okay. All right. Any other comments on this discussion point? All right, thank you. We're going to move on to, we've got a game to watch tonight, so we're going to move on. Item number five, approve the request for the Business Improvement District to offer free street metered parking for small business weekend, uh, Friday and Saturday, which is November twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two. Um, this is a pretty regular thing we've done since I can remember. Um, any issues with this or? Okay, any comments from anybody on that? All right, we'll put that on our consent agenda for tomorrow night. Uh, moving on to item six, um, consider solicitor attendance at the zoning hearing. Uh, the hearing was an application, uh, number nine 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 dash three zero one, uh, South Adams Street. Applicant seeks a variance from section one twelve dash six oh two dot L to allow for parking spaces less than five feet, five feet from the lot lines of the property. Um, the committee, uh, recommended three oh to not send a solicitor to this hearing. Anybody feel differently? Okay, so that being the case, we, we don't need to add that consent, that could just be dissolved or whatever you want to call it. One of these days, I'm going to come up with a good word for that. Uh, any comments on that, anybody? All right, item seven is approve of preliminary land development for six eleven East Neale Street. I know we saw some plans last month. Mr. Mr. Gore.
Thank you. I'll give a brief overview and introduction of the project here for Borough Council. Obviously, the committee had a three O recommendation for approval on this. Uh, this project consists of the construction of two where proposed warehouse buildings totaling roughly four hundred and sixty thousand square feet. Uh, I'm sorry, five twenty-three, five hundred and twenty-three thousand square feet combined between the both buildings. The planning commission did make a favorable recommendation on this plan. Um, obviously, this is a preliminary plan. They still have to come back through for final land development. The applicant is asking for five waivers. Three of them are in line with the stormwater ordinance, three waivers from the stormwater regulations. Basically, those three waivers they are asking for, they were approved under the last plan that they had submitted for this project that was approved. Uh, and additionally, those three waivers for the stormwater management are consistent with the, uh, new regulations that were passed in the stormwater ordinance for managed release concepts. Uh, the other waiver they have requested is related to, um, crosswalks. And that is just the, um, material of the crosswalks. And Bill, can you do me a favor? Can you pull up, um, the resolution for me? And the last waiver was related to the, the landscape islands. The, all of the waivers did receive support from the planning commission and borough consultants. So there were, there were no concerns that the TPD had with either of the, um, crosswalks or the landscape islands for the parking lot. Um, and obviously, Penone didn't have any concerns with the stormwater waivers, obviously, because we have made additional, um, provisions in our new stormwater ordinance for those activities. The, the, the solicitors handling this for us, we did hire a special counsel due to our, uh, current solicitor having a conflict on this parcel. But they did create a resolution for approval of this. It spells out all of the, uh, requirements that the developer has to comply with. There are conditions associated with this approval. One of them is that the applicant complied with all of the outstanding items that are outlined in all of the consultant and zoning review letters. A lot of those are just minor and administrative comments that they have to comply with. A lot of them will be straightened out when they submit their final land development plan. They also have to get their sewage, um, planning, sewage facilities, planning module in, in place. Excuse me, I'm losing my voice for some reason. Um, and they have to also have the approval from the waste water department. They'll have to get their, uh, will serve letter from Aqua. Number five, the applicant should obtain a variance from the zoning hearing board for a third driveway entrance on Ballmar Street, South Ballmar. The applicant did obtain the variance, um, last week from the zoning hearing board for that third driveway entrance. Uh, two, number six and number seven are pretty important to this, uh, approval. These two conditions are related to the traffic impact study that was done on this property. Because the applicant does not know the specific user that is going to be in these buildings. They have done their traffic impact study to a level of what they are specing the building for. Um, ours new zoning ordinance requires them to follow, um, a traffic planning, uh, engineering document, which is referred to as the I T E manual. In there, they have based their traffic impact study on land use code one fifty, which is, you know, warehouse, warehousing. These two conditions, um, if the, one of them is if the applicant has a different user in the building than is different than what the land use code written before, they'll have to do a new, uh, study for the new user, uh, prior to them obtaining building permits. Um, if they have a land or they have to have a user in there that's consistent with that, they're still going to conduct a post occupancy traffic study to ensure that the, um, study was in line with what they had originally proposed. So it's really covering the borough on both ends of that, so that we can ensure that it's going to comply with what they've provided to us in their study. Number eight, the applicant has agreed to replace the culvert that extends, uh, from the southwest portion of the lot. It goes underneath East Neale Street and into the stream. Um, we are currently reviewing this culvert to see what kind of shape it's in. Uh, but if it does need to re- replace or reline, the applicant has agreed to do so. Number nine, the applicant shall implement a way, a truck wayfinding plan that's going to be reviewed by the borough's traffic engineer. That's an important aspect to this. We need to make sure that we can have, um, the trucks following the proper, um, routes into and out of the site. And we don't have them navigating up into the residential areas. Um, the, the last, uh, couple are just, uh, generic administrative comments about paying outstanding fees and having, um, authorization to sign this document. Um, with that, I'll take any questions from Borough Council relating to the, um, application. And then we can turn it over to Mr. Adams, who can provide specific details and answer specific questions from Borough Council related to that. Uh, before I do that, there was one other aspect that we had provided. We had brought to the Parking Committee about, um, parking restrictions on South Adams. This was discussed at Smart Growth and the Parking Committee. We, during the review, and it was also noted by our traffic engineer that would be beneficial to restrict parking on the east side of South Adams along this property. Bill, can you pull up the parking, uh, there was a parking analysis? Yep, thank you. Oh, no, that's not that one. There you go. So this, this document here is a breakdown of the current restrictions, the parking restrictions that we have down there. It's also showing what the restrictions will be when the two driveways are installed there. Obviously, the two driveways need to be provided with, um, proper site distance as required by our subdivision and land development ordinance. And it also shows what the green will be where individuals can park after this development is in place. We have a couple of things at play here. Number one is the narrowness of the lane. When people are parking on both sides of that street, the trap, the two north and southbound travel lanes are very narrow. Um, additionally, when we have the site distance that we need to provide for those driveways, it really chops up the parking in that area. And it's going to be difficult to regulate where those parking areas are. And we'd have to determine how we can do that safely. Um, because typically we use signs that say no parking, but it's going to be staggered and offset and it's going to, it can get confusing as to where people can and cannot park down there. But obviously, like I said, we, we've, we've looked at this. Our traffic engineer has evaluated. Their recommendation was to prohibit tra, uh, parking on that east side of South Adams. Um, and we did evaluate those, those lanes down there and they are quite narrow, leaves about eight feet for each travel lane, which is really narrow. We've seen this area down here, um, when school, when, when the college students are not here, it's just a commercial truck parking. They just park there and don't move, right? I would, like Pat said the other day, there's still three white trucks with white trailers attached to them. They have been there for months, months. Uh, and then the rest, the, the rest of the parking is obviously students when they're in town. But there's, um, Matt, do you know exactly how many parking spaces are going to be provided here with the driveways and this, under this plan? On, on street, under this, the green areas? It wasn't many. I think, I think it was like twelve eight. So there's going to be, if you keep parking permitted there, there's going to be eight spaces.
The, and you want to restrict, I can't tell based on, I'm not really sure. I mean, I know what I'm looking at, but I don't understand what the lines are. But what, how, how far up of, on that side of Adams, like all the way up or up until?
No, so the restriction would be from the intersection of South Adams and East, East Neale to the northern boundary of that property.
Just to the property line.
So if you can see where the So if you can see where the, you see where the blue line is to the north, the little yellow, that's a current restriction there?
Yeah.
Uh, it would be basically to, to right there.
Yeah. So, I mean, this is down my neck of the woods, and I drive past here all the, I mean, all the time, maybe daily, if not more than daily. There is just cars that sit there all the time. I think most of the cars that ever move are college kids. And you can tell that just by seeing them, they're young, that they're probably walking through, you know, they leave their car there for weeks, and then, oh, I need to drive somewhere. I go. I, I think as you get up closer past the property, there are residents that park there. So if we're not affecting that, then that makes me feel a little better about it. But, um, but down that area, I've always thought that was kind of an odd little strip where there's just, just, it's just like storage parking. Like I could leave my car there and not move it forever. I mean, it's just, it's kind of odd. So I don't as much as I don't want to lose parking, I think if there was a, a small area there, that's going to make it more safe for trucks to go through, I, I understand, but.
This was brought up in parking, and if it's a safety issue and it's not going to interfere with resident parking, I think it's necessary. But if this is, if this is drawing trucks out into residential areas, I'm dealing with that problem on Price Street right now, and I don't want to see that. And just please clarify that.
Sure. And I, and Matt can get into the specifics of the truck maneuvers, but it is, this plan is not going, it's not the intent of this plan to introduce any truck traffic into north on Adams or Balmar. The, Bill, can you go to the land development plan? Do you have your laser pointer? So under this plan here, trucks that are, the plan is to have the trucks come from Auto Park up, off of 202, across Auto Park, up Balmar. Trucks that need to access the northern building, which is a large building, they'll make a left on East Neel Street. They'll go north on Adams to the northern driveway entrance there. They'll make the right-hand turn into the site, and that allows them to back into the building, the loading dock easier because they, it's easier for trucks to back in on the driver's side. Once they unload, they will exit the site to Balmar, and they can only make a right-hand turn to go south on Balmar. It's, it'd be physically impossible for them to make a left-hand turn out of the site. There is an island on both of those driveways in the middle of the driveway entrances that forces them to make a right-hand turn to go south.
So, so that Adam's side is an entrance only?
Correct. So that'll be for truck entrances, and I suppose that there may be some passenger vehicular traffic exiting out of there.
Not truck traffic.
Right. The trucks, a- and that'll be part of the wayfinding sign plan that we are provided, that the applicant's going to provide to us, and we'll review. There'll be some signage there that says, no trucks do not exit here. But due to the configuration of those two driveways, they're pretty narrow. Um, and the curb is not flared on the north side. It'd be very difficult for a truck to make a right-hand turn to go north on South Adams into the neighborhood. Trucks entering the, um, south building will come up South Balmar and enter into the site off of South Balmar, back into the loading dock, and then exit back onto South Balmar and go south. One of the-
Can I just ask? Explain the restrictions, why the north building trucks can't come from that direction? Just talk me through why that can't work.
They, they could, and as I was explaining, it's easier, and the applicant has explained this in several of the planning commission meetings. It's easier for the tractor trailers to back their truck in on the driver's side as opposed to the passenger side. It's an easier maneuver for them. So that, that's why they'll come into that northern entrance, and they'll back the trailer in on their driver's side.
And how many residences are across from that entrance?
None. That's the railroad that's uh, it's not, the phone's not even there. They're up further. That's just the rail yard. And we think, and what, not scallyw, it's about at least 500 feet. The northern, let's put that, put that pointer, laser pointer up there, Matt. Right there is the first residence. And that's about 550 feet to that driveway.
So is, because I can't see from here, that far right street, is that Neel Street right there?
Neels, Neels is at the bottom of the plan.
That's Balmar?
That right there is Neels.
So if they're coming off of 202 in the car park, right? And then they make a left, you said, correct?
Yeah. Onto Neels to go to the northern building.
Then isn't Neels a bigger street than Adams? Isn't Neels' street, the street itself, a bigger street? I mean, are we more concerned about the trucks back, backing in than we are the neighbors who live there? It seems to me Neels is a bigger street to, to go in if you want to come in one way and go out Adams. It seems to me you could keep traffic on Neels and Adams.
I don't, I, I can let the applicant answer that question. I'd have to, we'd have to make the plan larger to see what the road widths are.
I mean, I think about that curb, and I think about Adams, and Adams, like you've already said, is a much narrower street. And Neels, there's absolutely no homes on, no homes on Neels at all. I mean, so why go to Adams even if they are 500 feet away when you can keep it on a street that actually has no homes across from the parking lot that this company owns, a big parking lot that they haven't said how they're going to use it or how it ties into this development at all. A big, huge parking lot, which might even give them room to think outside the box.
Yeah, I can, I can let Matt answer that question, uh, and then we can get the information regarding the, uh, the width. But as I mentioned earlier, I think one of the major concerns about Sa- South Adams is its narrowness is currently because of the unenforced parking down there on both sides of the street that create that narrow road.
One little area in the town that has unenforced parking. But I guess I'm really concerned about two things, that Neels is a much wider street than South Adams. A, as you've explained, why you want to move parking when that could be revenue for the borough if you put metered parking there since it's unenforced and at this point uninhabitable because trucks are staying there for months on time. It could be a moneymaker instead of deciding to move all of the free parking and allow a company to have it. But beyond that, it seems like Neels is a bigger street than South Adams, and you're more concerned about how the trucks back into the landing than you are about the, and I've lived next door to, when it was a post office annex, and I know the trucks, the, the, the weight and the booms and all of that, that sound carries and that trucks make when they're backing in. So 500 feet, that's going to be a drop in the bucket to the neighbors. And what, I'm sorry, I asked a question last week. What was the percentage of landscaping on the total property? What was that percentage?
Uh, wait a minute. That, that'll, that'll be a question for Matt. One, one thing in response to your question, from, from, purely from a planning perspective, this, these buildings are oriented so that the loading docks are facing interior to the site. Just looking at this now, it'd be difficult to orient the buildings any other way in order for the East Neels to be utilized. Because if you had to turn that building, all those loading docks are going to be visible from the street. And from a planning perspective, I don't think that's something that we would want to have those loading docks just visible from the street frontage.
I understand your but these are drawings on paper at this point. It's not impacting people's lives in that neighborhood. It's people's lives in that neighborhood that I'm concerned, their quality of life that I'm concerned about. These are drawings on papers that, that can be adjusted and modified at this point.
Sure. So it sounds like a lot of your questions are geared towards the applicant, so I will let Matt step up here and have him address any of your concerns. If there's any other questions for me. If there's any other questions for me, I'll turn it over.
Not to be difficult, but I am concerned because you have two, you have two streets, Neels and Balmar, which both are traveled commercially. There are lots of traffic, lots of commercial traffic on both of those streets. There's no, there's no residents on Neel's streets, and there's none on Balmar. And so it just boggles my mind that of those two streets, you take the only street that has people on it, homes, a community, that, you know, quality of life is important to everyone in every board, and, and that's what I'm looking at.
Fair enough. And just so everybody knows, Matt Adams, on behalf of 611 East Neel Street LLC. So very good questions. As some of you guys recall, we were here last year with a different plan, so we've had a ton of time to kind of vet this site. So one of the things, Mayor Bev- Bev traffic only, and really what that does is isolate truck traffic from car trips. You really don't want to introduce tractor trailers and cars. So if you look at the design, car will enter, you know, auto parking. Separated, so you don't have a truck navigating through a parking lot. It wouldn't have to maneuver a truck, it would have to stop suddenly. So really, it's what we've seen in the marketplace from a lot of tenants is that they don't want trucks mixing, trucks stay isolated in the truck. Put an interior, it's kind of pointed out to kind of cut down the sound. The building being 36 foot clear on the inside, 42 feet, kind of acts as a sound wall to kind of bury that, you know, 10 to 12 that is currently National Phone and Diplomat demolition. So they are taking truck deliveries today. That is part of the reason why. Heading north on South Adams, we were 100% okay with it, but you know, it really wasn't our call because there's additional businesses to the north that take deliveries. I think in all reality, any truck that ever went up there would never go back down that route again. It's so narrow, it, it doesn't get you anywhere any faster. So it's really one of those things where you do it once and you never do it again. It's like, you know, running a U-Haul and going under a bridge and getting stuck. Like you're, you're never probably going to run a U-Haul again. But again, ju- just for that purpose, these residents here, we've kind of burned this area. We've added about 3,000 plantings on the site where there's roughly about four trees today. So most of our perimeter landscaping is part of one of our waivers. Instead of doing the landscaping, which we're still doing in the islands, we added it to the perimeter to kind of create that sound buffer and visual buffer from the residents. But as far as talks go, maneuver has been made for the last 70 years with Wyatt. I mean, their main entrance is still exactly present in the works. So it's only 300 feet from the residence, and that's where Wyatt was taking deliveries for their 325,000 square foot pharmaceutical manufacturing facility.
But you want-
200 feet.
You want two, you want two entrances on South Adams now?
Building would not actually enter off South Adams. So as Kevin mentioned, the, the next part of this process is to work with TPD on wayfinding. So the hard part is before we had a tenant identified, and they were able to control their truck trips by GPS, say, here's how you navigate the site. So it's very easy, and you know, with technology to say how the trucks want to be routed. No truck wants to get stuck in a residential area, trust me. I mean, a 10-point turn, you know, trying to turn around and maneuver a truck, it's like, you know, it's, it's a one-time thing. So depending on who the ultimate users are of the space, if they do control their own drivers, it'll be very easy for them to kind of coordinate. And then if they don't, what we're going to do is just kind of have a number of wayfinding signs kind of directing so there'd be signs here, you know, again, people love no trucks to the north, but again, that'd be something the borough could take on as far as, you know, talking to Diplomat demolition, National Phone, because or directly across the street from the residence. Behind them, so they're kind of sandwiched on either side by loading docks. As far as our exiting facility, we plan on having no trucks at these entrances. So no truck is really going to be allowed to even exit that area. It's really just going to be for vehicles only. But again, the bulk of the trucks and what we designed is to make this of South Adams into the site, clockwise. And right, we're not sending any trucks to the north. And, and to prevent that, just so nobody, you know, gets the great idea like, hey, I need to go to Market Street. But again, you're talking about a 53-foot trailer trying to navigate a turn on Market Street, it's very difficult. So it's not an easy turn to make. So these, you know, these, these curbs and put jobs in the middle kind of for that movement. So every truck circulates back now, South Balmar, the same way they came in, which is off 202, West Town Road, Auto Park Boulevard, which is the same route that Aduwe Pile takes. These buildings will not see the density of traffic that you see at an Aduwe Pile. Aduwe Pile is a, um, is a transfer station. So, you know, those truck terminals are moving product very quickly, full truckload into less than truckload. This is a distribution warehouse where product will be stored. Depending on who the ultimate user is, it could be store replenishment for retail. You know, think of any retailer that would have seasonal demand that would, you know, stock patio furniture for the summer, grass seed, things like that, that are going to sit for a while, they're going to come out at certain times versus a, a truck terminal, which would just be daily shipments in, breaking up pallets and reshipping out. So that's why you see those buildings are much smaller with loading docks all around them. So again, we, we feel that the traffic demand of this facility that's kind of stipulated in the IT manual is very high. But, you know, without knowing the end user, we didn't want to, you know, we don't want to come out and make that statement. So that's why I agreed to kind of a post occupancy study, just said, listen, once we identify a user, we'll follow their operation six months after they've moved in. If there's any additional impacts that weren't, you know, kind of quantified in the traffic study based on that use, that we would obviously correct it at that point. So again, we've thought long and hard about the circulation. You know, really, I, I drive this route every day, just to kind of just understand what's going on. Those trucks have not moved, Kevin, it's been five years. They might be different white vans, but they've kind of substituted them out. And even as a car, you kind of play chicken with somebody, you know, depending on how far they park away from the curb. So 34 feet, your car or truck, seven feet, so you're down to 20 feet. If they park a foot off the curb, you're down to 18 feet. So, you know, you're kind of like, you know, you're trying, waiting to navigate through there just in a car. So it's really not a safe condition today. So when you have these new driveways that are coming in here, which we already have one, you know, we just thought it was, you know, best suited just to kind of make sure it was just one side of the road. And again, I do believe that those cars are being warehoused. I don't really see, uh, you know, those cars moving on a daily. I, I drive by almost every day just to kind of check, but it seems like it's more seasonal depending on when school's out. During break, you'll see that street just completely empty with really no residents in proximity except for an apartment building down here. But I don't really see much traffic coming across as far as pedestrian traffic. I do see folks that are working at the daycare center, but there is like a little gravel lot. Gravel lot that people park in as well, so.
Bev, he's just out for clarity, you asked a question about the cartway widths. East Neels' cartway width, which is the width of the road between the curbs, is just under 29 feet. It's 20, or sorry, 29 feet, 29.8 feet, it's hard to read. And the South Adams cartway width is 34.4 feet. So South Adams is a wider street than East Neels.
And one other question, do you see these trucks being allowed to come in and out 24/7?
I mean, it, it really depends. You know, the last user that we had in front of us, they took night deliveries, and a lot of their, uh, smaller van deliveries went out during the day. It would really be-
It would really be specific to that user. What we found in other properties that we own, it's usually a two shift, which is during the day. But if it's a seasonal type user, you could see three shifts. But, you know, per the ordinance and per the zoning regs, like a, a company could operate twenty four seven, no different than, you know, Sardemer across the street. So, you know, we, we're not going to really restrict that until we know who the user potentially could be. But again, we, we don't envision any trucks heading into the residential areas. And that was, you know, kind of the, the genesis for the design. So as you know, there's no trucks allowed further east on East Neils, or excuse me, west on East Neils. And then it would really be up to the borough as far as restricting, you know, further trucks. But I, I just don't see the benefit of going up South Adams in a, in a fifty three foot trailer. What, what does that really get you? It doesn't get you any closer to two oh two faster.
Ms. Dorsey.
I, I have more of a, a comment than a, than a question. And, and I think Councilwoman McGinnis ran down the, the financial benefit to seeing this property developed, right? I think of, this property's been vacant for, what, fifteen years?
Yeah, fifteen years.
Fifteen years. So I definitely see the, the economic value to the property. However, and I, I think it was Mr. Khan gave us a little bit of a history lesson around the East End and particularly Ward two E is where all the industrial development has been for centuries. That has been by design, right? Because of the, the people that live there. If we are going to develop this space, I'd like to see economic development in the residential space and the people, the neighborhoods as well as, you know, this, I think is a great, a great project, project. I think we need to think about the residents and the impact to the residents as Dr., Dr. Mary Di Baptiste has been raising. But I also think that just because it's always been that way, doesn't mean it has to stay that way. And we have to do better.
Understood. Yeah. And again, I think I mentioned at the Smart Growth Committee, I mean, we did have multiple neighborhood meetings. You know, even going back to the first project. And a lot of the, you know, the comments that we got, we sent letters out to, you know, many folks that live within five hundred feet, which kind of hit, you know, some of the, the townhouse neighborhoods to the north on, north of, of, of Union. And again, a, a lot of their concerns were, you know, kind of safety at night. So we're adding about sixty plus street lights. And they're actually going to be the town center lights that you see downtown, which are more of the green egg corn lights. So there'll be, I think it's sixty five of those lights, all new street trees, sidewalks, safety around there. And, and roughly, we estimated about seven hundred and fifty jobs. You know, it's kind of hard to say without the user, but based on the size of the building and our experience leasing these, you know, a portion of those will be construction while we're getting it up and running. And the rest will be depending on number of shifts, full time employment, benefits, local earned income, and additional tax revenue for the school, county, and borough. And then we also, unfortunately with this site, it is deed restricted. So there's really nothing else that can go on this site. So from a deed restriction, when we bought the property, no residential, no recreation, no education. So that takes out a lot of the uses that everybody probably would want to see in this area. Office space, I don't know if I need to talk about that. I mean, that's, you know, I don't know when you're going to see another spec office building going up in the suburbs anytime soon. So as far as, you know, what's left, we have an environmental covenant on the property that we have to deal with. So, you know, we're, we're capping the site. So a lot of the asphalt and buildings will have vapor barriers under them. So we're correcting a lot of the deficiencies of the site, trying to get it back up to speed with stormwater, utilities, and, and again, a lot of the revenue that's coming back into the borough. So we're, we've been working kind of hand in hand with the planning commission. We've spent probably six meeting in total, including last year and the three this year, to kind of work through a, a lot of site specific issues. But as far as the economic development and engaging with the neighborhood, we tried to do, you know, our best to date. And hopefully the companies that do come here will hire local and, you know, continue to be a nice economic source for everyone. So.
If we could do this, as I understand it, the, there's a fee in lieu of, and that amounts to what, four hundred and eighty? Yeah. Would it be possible to direct that specifically to Ward two parks?
The ordinance requires that that money be spent in, in the parks that are in close proximity to the development. I did, I did have a conversation with Keith Karowski, Parks and Rec Director about that. And Keith, what do we, three, three parks, I think we identified that would be. So those three parks would, we could distribute funds to those area. Absolutely.
I, I just want to say this, and Councilwoman Dorsey, you know, I, I read the plan. I think it's a sound plan. I mean, for as long as I remember, that area has been dilapidated. I think it's a good thing that we're going to develop that area. The revenue aspects alone, two million dollars in tax revenue, property tax revenue. One point three million goes to the school district. That's a benefit because we're not building new homes or anything. Nearly five hundred thousand goes to Westchester Borough. Two hundred thousand goes to the county. Fifty five thousand goes to stormwater, the protection fee. Sustainability, I think that's a great thing, not to mention the remediation. We mentioned the park revenue. We also have to look at the earned income tax revenue that we get from the jobs that are going to be created. You know, seven hundred and fifty jobs roughly, two hundred and fifty construction jobs, maybe more, who knows? So I do think it's a sound plan environmentally, what they're doing. And I read the plan, Matt, you're putting, I believe, planting four hundred new trees, fifteen hundred shrubs in that area. So it's aesthetically going to look dramatically better than what it is. As far as the parking, I could talk with Councilwoman Sheila about the parking. Myself and Kevin Gourd did discuss about restricting trucks from going north on Union Street, in which case we would need to update an ordinance in order to do that, defining a truck, which they have in West Ocean, but I'm sure Kevin could get that information or whatnot. So I think that that would be good. I don't know if we could restrict anything because of National Foam and the demolition company right there. But, you know, numbers wise, I do think this, this is a very, very sound project.
And I would just have to say that anything is better than what it has been for the last fifteen years. I don't think that's the concern. For the last fifteen years, it was dilapidated. However, if you go back further than that, it was a viable business and it employed a lot of people, which is different than warehousing and trucking. Because these companies that will be in these warehouses, it's my understanding, it's warehouses. Am I wrong about that?
It is a warehouse. That's correct.
They're warehouses. These are existing companies that have existing employees. They're not necessarily adding to the economy. Now, the property is, and the taxing is. But to say that we are bringing businesses in this community, I think that's a little bit of an overstatement. Because some of these businesses may be coming into this community, but some of them may be just warehousing their particular product here for, to take elsewhere. So let's not overstate what is going on here. However, anything will be an improvement to what we've had for the last fifteen years. They are not Wyatt that are operating a multimillion dollar business where many, many, many people retired from with pensions intact. However, I will say this, again, anything is better than what's been there, but we can do better also in terms of being accountable to the community, in terms of being accountable to the neighbors that are here. And so it's just accountability. Your plan is great, the fact that you have inside, you know, the trucks are loading from the inside, that's great. What you're doing is wonderful. But let's not act like this community will be uplifted by this. Because at this point, you're going to need all of those trees and all of that landscaping to, to muffle some of that noise and some of that sound. And four hundred thousand dollars divided amongst three parks, it's not going to do a whole heck of a lot. Three parks that have never gotten any love. And John O'Green, all the money that's, John O'Green is part and parcel of the problem that exists in two E, which is you're not correcting the problem here, you're capping it, you're covering it. The problem is still there like a festering giant underground. The same problem that exists in John O'Green Park. It's never been corrected, never been addressed. And every year, they continually put more rubber, more rubber, more rubber in the ground. So four hundred thousand dollars, if it was allotted to John O'Green, wouldn't even deal with that problem that exists there. So even though the money, because you have to give it, it's wonderful, thank you for giving it. But really, at the end of the day, it's a few slide, slides really isn't going to have anything to do with quality of life. And that's all.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Flynn?
I've got two questions.
Sure.
On East Neale Street, there is a very large, beautiful parking lot. Is that owned by you guys or Sardemer?
That is ours.
Okay. What is planned for that?
It's not part of this development project, we're not really sure yet. But based on the plan that we have in front of you, it wasn't, it wasn't needed as part of the overall plan. We had parking and loading to accommodate the use.
And can, can you take a few sec, a few minutes and tell us exactly how you engaged with the neighbors from the entrance on Adams, South Adams Street to Union? There's thirteen houses, there's twelve houses. How did your corporation engage with those families there?
So we met with them, it was probably this time last year to kind of discuss the overall plan when we had it in front of them on the e-commerce. Sorry, it was within five hundred, no, yeah, it was more than that. So we met with, we sent out a hundred letters probably, and that included the, you know, let's just say it's fifteen on this northern section of South Adams. I'd say the majority of the folks that showed up actually lived in this area because they were the, the closest, you know, potentially impacted from the site. A few of them were rentals, one gentleman owned, I think, three of them. He had showed up, Bonnie Murray, who lives on the corner. We had discussed kind of the project. A lot of their concerns were, again, just, you know, connectivity around the sidewalk, security and lighting. Other things were visual. So that's why, I don't know if you've noticed, I don't know if you've been out there recently, we, we installed an eight foot high cedar fence. There was an old dilapidated chain link fence with barbed wire on top. It just made it look very industrial. We got rid of that. So we, we installed that fence. And then again, we, we added all of the perimeter landscaping that we could and burned that up to try to make that just kind of a hedge. So, yeah, I'd say majority of the folks that showed up to that onsite meeting were from the, from that block on South Adams and East Union.
So, you know, to the mayor's point, and she's talking about the people that are impacted on the, that section. You did your due diligence to make sure that the people understood what was happening, how it was happening. And you took their input and incorporated it into your plan.
Correct.
Thank you.
And again, I, I want to just, that letter went out. But again, this was, this is over like the last two years. So, you know, when I speak of a project, it was redevelopment of the site and taking in considerations as to, you know, again, the driveway before on the other plan was further north, if you recall. And that was a twenty four seven operation with the largest shift being at one AM. So you had about two hundred people working in the facility. And the, the majority of the operation happened between one AM and eight AM. So with, with this type of operation, without having a user identified, we'd be happy to have those same discussions to kind of introduce to the neighbors, here, here's the new company, just like we're doing the post occupancy study. We want to be good neighbors. But again, that, that was a specific, I mean, this entire area. So that was right adjacent. Again, this is, you know, much, much smaller as far as the number of parking spaces.
Any other comments on this? Mr. Cook.
Sorry.
Daryl Cook, South Walnut Street. What are the operational hours of National Foam and their loading dock? And what is the weekly or monthly volume of the trucks for National Foam?
That's a great question. I think their business has morphed over the years. I can't speak for them, but they have every right to use those loading docks twenty four seven as much as they can get throughput through that facility. I know their, their operations changed over the years, but I couldn't speak for how many trucks are being up there. We just didn't want to be the ones to impose restrictions that would potentially impact other businesses in the borough, including, you know, Diplomat demolition, the metal recycler, and then the two other buildings on, on East Union.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, are we, are we consent on this? Yeah. Okay. We'll move that to the consent agenda for tomorrow night. Thank you, Mr. Adams.
Thank you.
Moving on to item eight, which is our, approve our September twenty twenty two Harb certificates of appropriateness. There's three items, I believe. One at one forty two East Market, one at twenty two North Arlington, and one at one thirteen North High. All three were approved, were recommended to be approved by the, the Smart Growth Committee. So unless anybody has any issues, I think we can put them on consent unless somebody wants to pull something off. Okay, so they'll all, they'll all go on consent for tomorrow night. Uh, moving on to item nine, approved tax collection Act fifty seven resolution. Anyone want to tackle this one? Mr. Allen's not here.
Good evening. So Act fifty seven was passed in July of this year. And this is amending a prior local tax that was on the books, the May twenty fifth nineteen forty five act. This act amends the local tax collection law to allow for new property owners to receive a waiver from tax penalty charges that they may receive if they did not receive a tax bill within their first year of owning their home. Its effective date is October eleventh, twenty twenty two. And it requires taxing districts to, that they must enact a resolution or ordinance implementing the provisions of this act within ninety days. And in order to receive this waiver, they must provide a copy of the waiver that is imposed for taxpayers who provide the request within twelve months of transfer of real property attestation that they did not receive their tax bill, a copy of the deed with the date of the transfer and the payment of the face value of the tax notice. Are there any questions?
So this is adding to, adding to a resolution that already exists?
This is a resolution that we need to pass because this act was recently passed in July of this year that is requiring us, because we are a taxing jurisdiction. So this is basically, you know, protecting new homeowners that don't receive a, a bill that they won't accrue any interest, that they'll just be able to pay that at face value.
Okay. Any, any issues or, all right. So that'll go on consent. Thank you, Barb. Uh, item ten is approve using ten thousand two hundred sixty four dollars and twenty five cents in ARPA funding for accounting software upgrade. Anything want to add about the specific on that or?
So we're looking to upgrade the software that we currently use. We've been using that since the early two thousands. We're looking to move from their hosting services to a cloud version that will help our department with reporting, engaging department heads and, you know, being able to use the, the system more efficiently.
Great. Questions or concerns on that? Okay. All right. Thank you. That'll go on consent. Item eleven is scheduled November hearing date to approve the twenty twenty three preliminary budget. I would assume we'll do this essentially at a, a work session or a voting session night. Does that sound, or is that be a special meeting, right?
We were going to do the, propose a hearing if it's council's desire to do so at the business meeting in November. Yeah. I wanted to give a brief presentation about where our budget has been and where we left off last and where we are now. Oh, thank you, Mr. Flynn. I'm Sean Metrick, Borough Manager. And where we left off last, and we're just going to talk about the general fund tonight because we don't, when we last met, our parking funds and wastewater funds were in balance and we haven't suggested any rate changes. We did move some money around from the revenue side and expense side in those two funds. But I'm here just to talk to you about the general fund tonight because that affects people's property tax. Where we left off last, there was a quarter million dollar gap between revenue and expenses. And in order to bridge that gap with a tax increase, you'd have to raise taxes about four and a half, you know, low, less than four and a half percent to do so. That would be your third tax increase in three years. But we wanted to look at some other solutions to explore, and that's what we've spent the last three and a half weeks working on. So we were going to look at ways to cut spending, ways to increase. ways to increase revenue. And I'm happy to say we did not look at the other post-employment benefit allocation. We left that alone. And the investment in grant procurement for capital programming that we talked about, that's something we're going to continue to build because grant money in the form of American Rescue Plan Act dollars is a big reason why this budget process, this budget season, has been done without a lot of pain, honestly. And, but that money, that money's not, that bucket of money is not bottomless. And I think if we counsel order approve this budget that is before it at the November hearing, should it schedule a hearing for November, and with prior allocations, we will have allocated about 1.5 million out of our $2 million that are allocated towards the borough. And we'll give an accurate accounting of what's been allocated and what's been spent as we move through this process. And you have until the end of 2024 to allocate all of those funds. Did I get that year right? Yeah. And you have to spend it all before the end of 2026. I won't have any problem spending that money. But we're allocating it by those deadlines. But I want to be clear about where it's going. So we looked at cutting spending. So we dove in, like I said, last month, we look at big numbers first. We dove into the big numbers in our budget. And we found that we could trim our budget a little bit in Public Works and Police Department without eliminating any positions. It just has to do with the way we built the budget. The Police Department salary line item is something north of $4 million. So we found $50,000 that we didn't need in the budget based upon conversations with the police chief and expected or unexpected retirements and resignations next year. We then looked at, we got some really great news from our healthcare provider. The premiums for family healthcare work are coming in 7% lower than we expected. And for single, it's 3%. So that came up to about $97 in spending cuts. And we also got good news from our general liability and auto insurance renewal with regards to our budget of $27,000 in savings there. So if you're doing your math quickly, what are you up to already? Getting there, getting close, right? Yeah, about 175. So we looked at the revenue side. And as we mentioned about the new position in building and housing would enable us to reanimate our commercial fire inspection program that was scuttled by the onset of COVID. And that would generate $60,000 in revenue. And we had talked a little bit about dipping into the interest and dividend portions of your capital operating reserve fund. We had originally thought that number was going to be something north of $112,000. We reduced that to $47,000. So out of an 8 million-plus corpus or body of the fund, you're only looking at $47,000 coming out of that. And I can't do the percentage math quick enough, but that's pretty low. Half a percent. So we are suggesting a couple expense increases, very minor, less than $30,000 to balance out and to come out to that quarter-million-dollar number that we were gapped. So we think that we'd like to bring before you a request, and Keith can speak more about it to you if you have specific questions. We're bringing in some seasonal, either part-time or full-time, not a full-time employee, maybe full-time hours on a seasonal basis for next year. So somebody who would come in, and I used to have seasonal jobs when I was younger. I worked for the Park Service. And they said, we're great to have you here, Sean, but once you log more than 1,000 hours, you got to hit the street. So I did that for a couple of years. I worked at a couple sites, one in New York City, one in Hawaii. That's a story for a different time. But that's the idea here, that there would be a seasonal, this would be a seasonal position to help Keith out with that surge that happens during the event season so that he has a little bit more time to get ahead of his curve on planning. And depending on how it'll go next year, we'll reevaluate then, see if it's a good thing for 2024 or not, or we expand on it, or we can make those decisions later. Because here, we're not committing to a full-time employee that we would have to lay off if it didn't work out. And then because we had a little bit extra in the budget, I'm always looking for ways to improve employee performance, supporting employees. We've been doing some really great work with organizational research and development to support the managers with communication skills and developing communication. That's an example of the kinds of things that those dollars would be spent on. I don't have anything planned out to do with that $5,500. I just would like latitude to do so next year, should something come up. This increases the training budget and admin to a total of $16,000. Thank you. So with those seven moves on the chessboard, we present to you tonight, in the spreadsheet we sent around, a balanced budget with no change to the income tax or property tax rate, currently set at 7.7 mils. And we're doing that largely on the backs of Rescue Plan Act dollars that are funding your current cash capital projects. And that money's not going to be around forever, but we have a little bit of time to think of some solutions in the meantime. So proposed schedule here would be if council concurs that we schedule a budget hearing at the November business meeting, at which time we will put the budget out. We'll put it together with our departmental summaries, advertise it through our social networks. Bill Ratu is going to write a great article about the budget and that there's no tax increase. And he's going to get lots of people to come out to the hearing who have questions about how the borough operates. And we could have a hearing in November if council chooses so. If you want to have more conversation, discussion about this, we have time to do this in December as well. And that's all I have for you this evening.
Questions about the budget first? Anybody? You have a summary?
Just a comment. I just want to thank you, Barb. Thank you, Sean, the heads of the departments. That was the one thing that we stressed during the finance committee, myself, Nick Allen, and Bernie Flynn, not to raise taxes, especially when inflation is still hot at 8.5%. I think that's good. I think that's good for the residents of the borough. So thank you for that.
I agree.
I'd like to echo what Mr. McGinnis said. I'm pretty impressed that you were able to balance the budget with even the increases in the police salary and benefits. Every year, that goes up roughly about $500,000, if I remember correctly. And you're actually able to balance things without raising taxes, but knowing that increase is always looming there. So it's a good effort. Thank you.
Great. Okay, that being said, we do have to, if we, so one, two, we should schedule a hearing for next month to approve the preliminary budget. That session that he mentioned, that meeting would be, if I'm right, November 16th? Does that sound right? Yep. Does that sound good to everybody? Okay, any other comments or questions on this? Okay, we'll put that on consent. Thank you for your work. Appreciate that. Thanks, Barb. Yeah. Okay. And moving on to item 12, other business. A is approve the September 2021, 2022 Borough Council Meeting Minutes. Are we good with consent on that? All right. Item B is consider approval of the ASME labor contract for 2023 to 2026. Everybody had that information. Are we consent on that?
Yes, I did reach out to ASME, and they're good with it, too.
Great. Do you have anything you want to mention about that, or?